Yeah, because I was here.
Terry, we're getting ready to start.
Okay, it's five o'clock, so I'll call this meeting in Tusk County Public Council District One. We have a board meeting to order. Let's start the approval of the agenda. Before we do that, Mandy, you need to do a roll call, or you think you got everyone?
I got everyone, and Bob is just pulling it so he can get there just a minute.
Okay. So let's start with the approval of the agenda. Is there anything to add to the agenda? And we can report in the education board reports, we can talk a bit about the rural leisure conference that we attended, so we can add to the education.
I would like to request that executive session include discussion on real estate also.
Yeah. All right. Anything else to add? Or change? Okay, those two additions to the agenda. A motion to approve the agenda?
To approve this, maybe?
My second. All right. By your second, by Terry, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so good. Now we have the consent agenda. Hopefully you guys got a chance to review the minutes from last board meeting. Last board meeting from my second checks the foundation for the finance committee minutes. The comments on the consent agenda? Okay. A motion to approve the consent agenda? Erica?
Second.
Second, John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. It's time for public comment and announcements. Before I say this, before we get to public comments, I just want to mention a couple of things. We have, since our last regular board meeting, we had a special board meeting on the 20th of July, where we talked about that will be in Tusk County. We had 37 people who attended the meeting, either in person or virtually, and since then, we've had 110, 112 views of that meeting online. So it's good. There seems to be some information getting out there to the community. And then on the 24th, there was an employee forum that had 105 people at it, which was good. And then since then, 76 additional views online. So one of the, one of the goals of this board and of the system as a whole is transparency and keeping the lines of communication open with the community. And so hopefully that's gone some way toward doing that. But obviously, these are public board meetings, and we're happy to have people attend these as well and, and, and provide their comments. So now is the time for public comments and announcements. When you, if you have a comment, you wouldn't mind please stating your name and giving your, your address, just so we know where in the county you are. And please try to keep it to three minutes. And remember that at public board meetings, we don't respond, but be sure that you are heard and, and we do consider your comments very seriously. Is there anybody at the meeting tonight who would like to make a public comment?
I guess I'll start.
Yes. Feel free to stand up and introduce yourself.
I'm Elizabeth McKeon, and I live in Ellensburg. Do you need my?
No, that's good enough.
I'm a little bit any behind because I don't get local paper at this time. So you may have done all the things that I'm going to ask about, but since I'm out of the loop, I'd like to know if at a later date you can enlighten me. I see district buying a lot of real estate and remodeling it and working on it. And then at the same time, I see a lot of providers leaving for various reasons. But as you know, in a small town, you hear a lot of what the reasons are. They may or may not be accurate. But just from my perspective, I feel that you're probably looking to the future for the real estate because the county is going to grow. But because we're losing so many providers, it's difficult to get into your primary care doctor. It's kind of like appointment by plot luck now, if you're lucky. And I would like to know what's going on. Why are we losing all these people? I feel like you're focusing on the future, but you're ignoring the present. So that's what my concern is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Lisbon. Appreciate it. Anyone else who would like to make a comment during the?
I guess I can say something. I'm Gail Jensen, and lived here all my life and have been very involved with the hospital through the years because of my mother working at Taylor Richardson Clinic, knew all the doctors that started this hospital, and very concerned about what has happened to it. These providers that are leaving, I've had four of my providers leaving in the last five years. Now, there's something wrong with that. And that, that really concerns me. Back to her thing, as far as the real estate goes, I can see why you're doing it, but on the other hand, you've got providers and then you're letting them go. And now the word is out about how you pay traveling nurses. All of these people, the hospitalist, I know what happened to him. Carrie, I know what happened to her. And I know these people are very concerned. And I just, I guess I'm just asking, why? Why are you paying these travelers more than you're paying our providers? To me, that is stupid. And I'm sorry to say that. But somebody has got to step up and say, we've got to do something different and get some providers. People are leaving. They're not going to come, they're not going to come to this hospital or these providers. They're going to go out of town. Many of them are going to ISQ. Can't blame them. I, I just, I don't know. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Gail. Appreciate your thoughtful comments. Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a comment?
I guess I would like to add just, maybe you put it out and I just haven't seen it. How are you paying for all this real estate? Is it public money, grants? How are you paying for it? Has that been published or is that privileged information?
Thank you. Other comments? Anything else?
I'll make a quick comment.
Sure.
Um, so appreciate your comments. Thinking about it. Our hospital is owned by the community. You are a community-based hospital. My, my comment is, my wife fell a few days ago, messed up her hip. I wish we'd go emergency room or rapid access. And she got, she called today, got in today for rapid access for x-ray.
Figure out.
Chipped a bone. Um, so we are doing things like rapid access, try to. We've got groups that are focusing on access alone, because that is something that, I've lived in Ellen for 22 years. Back in 1998, access was huge. We just, we didn't have any doctors. I mean, that's two private practices, basically, and that was it. And healthcare has changed so much. But we appreciate the comments. We want to work on these things. You know, I've had people bring up like, hey, where, where do you spend the money? I mean, our hospital gets from a tax base $1,200 a year, I think, is what our, we get from tax base of Ellensburg Hospital District One. So we, we don't get, we're not supported like other communities are from these different things like that. But I, I can promise you, we take it super serious. The idea of rapid access, which I think we're going to talk about more tonight, is a really novel idea. And all your questions can be answered. Maybe this isn't the place to answer it, but.
Matt, if it's okay with you, I was going to give my card out, and you can contact me. I can be a contact conduit to you meeting with board member, or you can come in and meet with me directly, and we can answer some of these questions thoroughly, if that'd be helpful. So.
Where, where, where can we find where the money's been spent? Where can we actually see? It's public, it's a public hospital.
Absolutely. Even in tonight's packet, there's financials of where every, every penny was spent for the last month. So if you can get copies of.
We have a website.
Dr. Martin, two months ago gave an excellent, was it two months ago?
Thank you.
Well, actually, no, it was.
The last board meeting.
It was the last regular board meeting.
So that was going to be my public comment.
So I would encourage you to go back to last month's board meeting. Dr. Martin gave an excellent presentation on what's going on locally, regionally, and nationwide as far as provider shortages and and how do we, you know, how do we match? He does a really good job of. It's, it is unfortunate we have such high turnover. We're looking at that a week almost. So, yeah, we welcome all, any, all comments.
And Julie could tell you about how you could find about our last meeting when Dr. Martin put that stuff out. Or you can go to our website and it, and you can also listen to the meeting. Because it has a lot to do with personal issues with the providers. But because we're a public council district, we want to take it personally also. So I think it's very good for you to listen to it. And I also greatly appreciate your comments because it's always important that we do great stuff for our public.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
Okay, I had a real quick public comment. So I'm on the finance committee, so I'm one of the board members. If any of you want to know what real estate we're buying, where we spent the money, I'd be glad to, to meet with you, talk with you on the phone, whatever's easiest to work you through why and, and how we spend this sort of money. Because typically, from our standpoint, it is an investment in the future, because we do have some reserves. We, you know, that helps keep us stable when COVID hit and so forth. We didn't go bankrupt immediately because we had some reserves. So we can put the money in the bank, or we can sometimes put it into real estate, which connects to our plans to continue to grow and serve the community. Now, your questions are more complex than I can answer in this brief comment section. But again, everybody on this board is very willing to meet and discuss at length any of your concerns. We, we try to be very open, and we're really appreciative that you come and spend time to share your concerns, because, you know, I brought my mom to Ellensburg three years ago. She's facing the same sort of things you are. But we worked through it, and again, I've encouraged her to stick with it, and she's getting tremendously good care here. There has been some turnover in her providers, but that's the world we live in. And we have to accept that's the world we live in. So what we do is work within those parameters to keep the whole mechanism going forward temporarily. That was some of these, what we're calling travelers and locums, which are more expensive. But the other option was nothing, not having any providers. So we've done a great job, as we've come out of COVID, to step back from the travelers. We probably have, we're probably spending now less than 20% of what we were on travelers and locums at the peak of COVID, to keep the whole system working so that people could get care. We're working to get it down to zero in the next year or so. But again, it's, it's a big organization, a big, a big organism, and it takes time to work through it. But again, anyone here would be happy to meet with you and answer questions to whatever extent you want to go into detail and so forth. So again, I just want to thank you for coming in. I know, we'd like to do more right now, but we do have to do the board meeting, and I'm going to get in trouble for having comments anyway, because we're not supposed to. But it felt important to say a little something.
Any other public comments?
One, one more question, and I'll do it real fast.
Yep.
And you guys can talk about it. The, I have heard from several people that all of these providers that you have hired, that have come on and that have left, that you are paying them by how many people go through their office and their time, non, whatever, and that is how they're being paid. By how many patients they put through. And this is, this is going around. True or not, I don't know. But it concerns me a lot.
Okay. Thank you very much, Gail.
There's another question you can ask Julie. Talk to her, and she'll explain it to me.
I think the explanation, when we have time for it, will appease you somewhat. And it's, it's much more nuanced than that lack of light statement, but there's a lot to discuss, and I look forward to.
Look at that. I think you would appreciate that the presentation you gave last month. It's on YouTube at the beginning of this.
Is that the one that was on the 20th or last month?
No, last month.
22nd. Is the 20th, is it somewhere too?
Yep.
Yeah.
On this stuff that we got tonight? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and for caring about your community. Any other comments before we move on? Okay. Thank you very much once again. We'll move on then to the reports and dashboard section of the meeting. We'll start with Mandy Olson and Quality, man.
Yeah, so first I just want to say thank you, John, for helping me clarify a sentence or two. On the survey of patient safety culture, the last sentence there, what I was trying to say was that some themes already identified, concerns for security and staffing, and appreciation from staff to, for the teams that they work with and for their, their direct leader. It was not well worded, but our staff really like their teams, and they really like their manager, supervisor, the person they report directly. And then I think that's, I don't have anything to add this week. Should questions?
Yeah, hopefully you guys have had a chance to review managed reports. Are there any specific questions that you'd like her to go into more detail on?
Do you want to give us any background on the anywhere software and just any thoughts on that or?
Um, this has been a long presentation. We've had, so it used to be that Employee Health provided all of the employee health services directly out of that office. So we would give vaccine out of that office, and as we opened Workplace Health, we set our own employees there to get their employee health services from Workplace Health. One of the things we're still required to do on the employee health side, it's not, it's separate from the services that employees get, is we have to do reporting to the CDC about how many of our employees are vaccinated. We have to keep track, and people want their, you know, their employee health records when they leave employment. And so that's really sticky between, you know, Cerner and, and they're an employee. And so anywhere is a way for us to track compliance with their employee health mandatory program and to do so without having to put that burden on Workplace Health. They don't provide, you know, huge reports of your employees' compliance to, you know, other organizations in the community. And they're not going to report that to us for CDC. That's, we're obligated to do that as Employee Health. So this system helps us track. You can send out reminders. Employees can interact with it directly to put their own information in if they'd like to. And it's going, it interfaces with WAYS, the state utilization registry too. So instead of having to, you know, submit all these documents or get them from your previous employer, once we add the person to that, that a lot of their information will automatically be there then, as well as interfacing with LabCorp for any titers. So we're really excited about it. We think it's going to decrease a lot of manual workflow. Yes, yeah, for sure, because that's always one of the things they look at is show us this employee's, you know, health record, and that they were compliant with your employee health program when they came on or every year.
Anything you want to call our attention to on the dashboard?
On the Medicare Wellness business, they have about six a day that they set aside for nurse visits to initiate. And we're doing really well with those Medicare Wellness visits, but we'd like to increase. So they think they have more capacity now to be able to go ahead and increase that to 10 a day is what they're thinking about. So we, we hopefully will see that number go up too. But we are, someone finally beat us in the Washington Rural Health Collaborative with their, their percent of Medicare Wellness visits. But we're still, we're second. So we're still doing really well and still working towards that target of 60%.
Yes, and I think it's having the WRHC average. That, that's in context of that and the improvement in management.
On your, your graph for median time to ECG?
Yes.
You've got 17, which coincidentally matches the narrative. So did we just have the two patients that counted that whole statistic for the month? And it happened to be 17 minutes?
Oh, yeah.
And help me get, what prevents it from being quicker? And I know there's a lot of little things that happen to, to meet that 10-minute thing. You've got to know there's an issue. Is the clock starts when they check in? Is that when the clocks start?
When they come in the door. So it, sometimes it's, they may have, in the past, some of the challenges have been they have an unusual presentation, like something like abdominal pain.
So they get distracted with something that's.
It's not immediately obvious that we're thinking cardiac. Yeah, I, for this one, I don't, she didn't tell us why that one was elevated at data share this month. I don't, I don't recall what the reason was.
Again, with an N of two, you're looking at the. One, one could have been five, and one could have been 25.
Which is probably.
You just don't know that.
The case. And, and sometimes they are, they're coming in, you know, something like dizziness or, you know, nausea sometimes is one of them. In the past, we had done this whole initiative, instead of just thinking chest, it was like anything neck to torso was thinking chest pain. Sometimes it could be just that the, the number of patients in the ER and.
So they could check in and then sit in a chair, and the clock's already ticking? Is that how it works?
Yep.
Okay, so.
They say chest pain, they're not sitting in a chair.
For the amount of time.
If they identify it, they go quicker. But if they didn't have to identify it, they could be sitting there, the crowded waiting room, and it takes a few extra minutes to get to them.
Yeah, and then it, and Dee Dee, I don't know if you can chime in if you have anything to add, but.
You guys are doing great.
Sometimes too, it's, you know, just getting the patient addressed and the leads put on them and getting the information entered into the, the ECG machine. And it's just having the person.
I'm trying to remember, does registration ask that question? Are you having any chest pains, or is that not a question in registration?
Basically, what is bringing you in here.
Okay.
So it's based off what they tell you. And you can't make that assessment.
And we have, it's a work in our three hours, and we can do a 12 lead KG there with privacy.
That first one, when you come in to the right there. Okay. Thank you.
One of the comments, the patient comment about Dr. Fang calling us to the beach. But also my comment, except I had met Dr. Fang previously, and I had wonderful care. I, it was Anne, excuse me, Annette, Alice, and Jill down there, and it was such a strange to say wonderful experience. It was really, it was really good. And I felt so well cared for. And so I just wanted to echo this patient here. Thank you.
Glad to hear it.
Any other questions or comments about the dashboard? Anything else worth mentioning?
Um, I do want to mention, it's not in the dashboard here, but I just am really excited about it, and hopefully it'll be presented to QI Council next month. But we have implemented barcode scanning in the clinics, and we're looking at our barcode scanning data in the hospital and other areas. And just how impressed I am with how we're doing with barcode scanning after not, it hasn't been like a, a special quality improvement project in many areas, and they're still doing really well in nursing areas, as well as the clinics. Women's Health and Peds are just doing awesome with barcode scanning. And that's not a standard that clinics have barcode scanning, but it's really a, a great safety mechanism. And I think it's really helped with vaccine errors, so.
Could you say a little more, please, just about what you're scanning and?
Medications. So barcode scanning of medications prior to giving them.
Or vaccine, vaccine reported, but yes.
The big project, huge work by IT and, and clinic staff, and I'm just really impressed. So make sure they get called out. We'll have more, we'll have data and, and more for you to share about it, but.
Yeah. That's good. Any other questions for Mandy? Thank you very much, Ray. All right, next up, our CEO report, Julie Peters.
I'm going to steal some from both from Dee Dee and from Stacy with some updates. I just want to mention about the emergency department volumes. We were, a year ago, routinely running 30 patients, 30, meant 30s, through the emergency department in a 24-hour period. Our new peaks are 66 and 67 patients a day. It is, they're up 20% overall, but the, the peaks are getting higher. I think volumes are continuing the increase in the emergency department, and many of those patients are coming up from out of town for care here. So the volumes are up, the providers are managing to handle that. And I think we got two interviews for ED APCs.
Two and two pending.
So we're looking at adding to the PA staff down there as well.
We talked a bit about this, I think, in the last board meeting, Julie, but what accounts for the out-of-town patients going to the ED?
Yakima Memorial is the busiest emergency department in the state. They, they go back and forth between Everett and Yakima. And people are just finding they can come up here, get great care, and get home in the time that it would take them. They'd still be sitting in the waiting room in Yakima, and the word is getting out.
Thank you.
The other thing I want to talk about is, this week, we had our 90-day review of the Rapid Access Program. So that was open May 1st. I'm stealing all the space. We had great attendance. We had Dr. Beard, who's the physician leader of that, Dr. Hibs, Dr. Martin, Dr. Merrill Steskal from Family Medicine in Ellensburg. Rapid Access is available to KVH employees, if you, if they can't, excuse me, patients, if they can't get into their own provider, Rapid Access is offered. It's open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, six days a week, and staffed with APC and provider. Since it's been, we have had something over 800 visits. Over 800 visits. So 80 to 100 visits per week are being added through Rapid Access. We, it's in the, on the first floor of the Medical Arts Center. I, they've already decided they're going to be moving lab in the Medical Arts Center back into the area that was the old Infusion Center. I hope I have no sense. So. They're over there. Okay, all right, did a walk through there. So, so we need more space for Rapid Access. And lab also needs more space there. So their wayfinding is probably the most challenge that we have there. But we'll be moving lab services, same first floor, but they'll be around where the Infusion Center used to be.
That back tucked around dermatology?
Correct, right. So, and derms all on board, went and talked to the MAs and the providers in the front, you know, they're, they're happy to sort of direct patients back there. There'll be four B's back there for lobotomy and, and lab. And then we'll have a set, separate registration and three exam rooms for Rapid Access in the space up front that was originally designed for Rapid Access. So again, we're anticipating, this has been soft rollout. It's only been rolled out to the clinics. So they've been directing patients there. Michelle's ready to pull the trigger on advertising to the public, and we want to be ready to handle additional volume. But again, 80 to 100 visits per week that would have either been delayed or double booked, being redirected to Rapid Access. would have either been delayed or double booked, being redirected to Rapid Access. Anyone who's had a appointment within three years, is that right?
Correct.
With primary care here is eligible to be referred to Rapid Access. So great review. Some tweaking going on, but by and large, it hit the ground running May 1st and has, has found everything we hoped it would. More to come. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions about Julie's report?
The ER visits, what's the acuity level compared to previous years?
Really hasn't, hasn't moved much.
Okay, so just more patients?
Same, same percent breakout.
Okay.
Just more of the same. It is very unusual for us to have a full waiting room and reach at folks for emergency sitting in the main lobby this week.
So the rooms are getting filled up?
Down the hallways, unfortunately. Staffing has been stable. I have been upstaffing when I can. And I think having our new partnership with the ED physicians out of Yakima, because they're used to that type of volume and that speed. So it's, we're, we're doing really great.
Our, our current record in the ED is 77 in 24 hours. The comment that I heard from the Yakima physicians when they first got here was 47 in a day. That's what we're used to having in the waiting room. And you're victims of our success. It's impacting our volumes.
The other transfers are about, from the emergency department are about 4%. So about 96% of patients they see there are treated and discharged or admitted. The vast majority of those transfers are still for behavioral health. So.
We're definitely medical problems that we just cannot take care of here. You know, an actual heart attack, an acute stroke. So I, I, we're doing great with our transfers too. We still.
ERCP, and I don't even know what that is.
But we review every single transfer that comes out, why it went out. And Julia's aware of the situation.
Retrograde lungic pancreatogram.
I'm sticking with ERCP.
Any other questions about Julie's reports? Amanda, HR, that's, there's something here. Her, her report. And is there anything you want to call our attention to or comment on before I open it up to questions for you?
Yes. So my volunteer in student services section is a little longer this month. And not by accident, Kyle West has been working really hard with Alicia from marketing and some others, all the leaders that had job shadows in their departments for the Experience Healthcare Program. So we're so excited to have, we actually had eight high school students in the group and they did interactive activities and they worked with the ER and Cody to do simulations. So that was just a really wonderful experience. And we're really trying to invest in the future of healthcare, getting people really involved through apprenticeships, career development, and that Experience Healthcare Program. And this is the time of year where we start to begin our benefits planning and compensation planning for non-contract staff. And so we have a lot of really great things going on, as well as huge staff development projects that I'll expand more on in future board reports. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Amanda?
Amanda, I was curious, the 22 learners that are on site?
Yeah.
Do they receive any compensation? Or is this part of, you know, classroom work that they're doing?
Yeah, it's, it's classroom work. So it's credit. And we have affiliation agreements with the schools that we, that we partner with. And so they get credit for that. Great question.
And do we find, what's our percentage of people that come through this and work here that we are able to bring on as employees once they graduate? Is that on its track?
Yeah, you know, that is a great question. It's something we're trying to work on even more and more. I just had a conversation with our recruiter about that. It depends on the program, really. If it's an MA, for example, which are high demand, we have pretty good success with that because we always have openings available, RNs as well. In fact, a lot of, when we have RNs that are listed as learners in my report, sometimes they're current employees that are going back for a higher level degree. And so some, we do support our current employees as well. And so that are already hired, hired with us and they can get some clinicals with a new department. And, you know, I, I know Kyle is really passionate about this too. But when it comes to providers and medical students, him and Kat Bruner have done some work with the residency program and some sponsoring, some breakfast to try to, you know, these are people that are in our community already. And so we're really trying to put more effort moving forward. And there's been some work already about, you know, really keeping those residents in the community and partnering with Community Health of Central Washington Residency Program to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Residents are the one exception. Residents do hard salary typically on the order of $50,000 a year for the duration of their training.
Not by us.
Not by us, by their program. Okay.
Any other questions for Amanda? All right. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Ron Furlock, your reports is here, page 21 to 28.
See, the project costed date hasn't changed too much since last month. A little bit added to that. The project is, is on schedule with the updated schedule. As a matter of fact, they're a little bit ahead. Yes, we may, it's not in here. It'll reflect that next month. All the equipment, we're looking at good delivery dates on hours. And so we're able to go back to the vendors now and say, you know, hey, here's when we need it. Give them the dates now that we have the schedule. And we're looking good. The one thing I did notice was, first call system was kind of scaring me because I wasn't getting any lead times on that. And so it was concerning enough that I suggested to him that we were poised to go to a different system.
That's my answer.
And so, yeah, so they, they not only gave me a lead time, they said, the equipment's manufactured and ready to ship. And so it changed since, since this report. That's all I looked at. It's really good with things.
MRI. Update that during the construction meeting today.
Yep. So the, yeah, the MRI and this year will confirm for those install dates. Equipment is here. So we had, I had noted in there that I might want to consider ready that mobile unit for one more month, just in case. As it sits right now, we're, everything's in line to get it done before then. But we should still hold that possibility for a little bit.
Do we think that'd be an issue based on our status with that company?
I have not reached out to, uh, a document about that. Just.
Just don't say anything. Don't give a back.
Yeah.
Take the wheel.
Yeah.
So we have it for, is this longer through March?
I think you're just thinking about staying one more month, you know, what we currently.
Okay. So we thought maybe at first it might be already surplus by that. Now maybe we can actually.
Yeah, we were hoping we'd get it in, get the new one in even sooner, but.
Yeah, but it's like late April that it's set to open up. And we have it through May. So that gives you one month, but.
How long does it take? I, I know we introduced new equipment before and just the, once it's installed, just training, onboarding, all that before it's up and ready and ready to serve. That's somewhat lengthy, isn't it?
It was. We talked about that at the construction meeting with GE. They were on the line. And a lot of that pre-work, they're going to have done. So when they do their protocol calls.
Okay.
Yeah. And so they should have that ready by, I think the actual date is like the 24th of April, if I remember correctly. So.
I, I believe staff will also go to another GE location and train on the same machine as different sites. So the staff will be trained before they're on it.
Okay.
So.
That's great.
Yeah. Any other questions for Ron?
Did you have some pictures?
Yeah. So I already have some pictures of progress.
And approximately when were these taken?
This one was probably about two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And since then, they've got a lot of the, they got all the footings down around the north side now. They're, they were building the footings. And now they're, they've got the walls formed up and they're ready for those.
Ron, just for the, for the sake of maybe some, some guests we have here, could you just give us a big picture? Like, why are we doing this? What's happening? Sure, the people who don't know.
Yeah. It expands three different departments, surgery, materials management, and radiology. And the materials management department was just bursting at the seams, trying to keep up with, there's just a lot more materials that they have to keep for the different surgical cases. There's unique pieces and parts as well for each of those cases. And so because we are doing those surgeries here now, it's really expanded what they have to have.
So that's both orthopedics. When we bring in vascular, that's a whole new set of inventory for grafts and prosthetics that we have to maintain. The other piece is, we have one cap, one CT scanner, which is a critical part of stroke care. One of the quality metrics is timed door for CT. If we don't have CT, and we frequently didn't, because mechanical issues, we're on deferred. So anybody with potential stroke automatically gets shipped somewhere else. So one of the big drivers for this was to be able to add a second CT scanner so that we have some redundancy. And we weren't looking at just being incapacitated.
Interventional radiology, something we've also added, takes the CT, it's a 90 minute procedure and we're holding our breath that we don't have a stroke on the way during that 90 minutes. So the redundancy of CT is.
And. And it's just, from an operational standpoint, it brings the MRI that we have inside the building and makes that much more friendly. And it's a bigger CT that allows more people to get in there. And it, the images that that thing takes is just super impressive. Upgrading that. And the surgery, just because we are doing those specialty cases now and, and the community's growing, the pressure on the three ORs that we have is just kind of backed up. And so having one more OR will help us do that. And so that particular, the new OR, is going to be bigger than the other three that'll allow us to do some more advanced surgeries and setups.
So what we're doing with this, you talked about materials, we're allowing, we're providing for some of the service we've already, we've already added, the services we've added to expand the services we offer. But then this is also going to allow us to expand access in terms of additional surgeries and in terms of radiology and things like that. So it's all about, kind of, it's all about access at bottom. Not only to accommodate what we've already done, but to, to sort of allow for more procedures in the future. Is that telling?
Absolutely. And there were some, some other bottlenecks and the surgical department in central sterile processing that prevented us from getting the cases through faster.
The turnaround time to clean the instruments and have it ready for the next case?
Exactly. Yeah. And so that was looked at and is expanded also. Julia, it's something.
Yeah, just the, we were very thin in terms of anesthesia. And as you recall, we've added, I think, 13 anesthesia providers so that they'll be able to handle the rooms. But we would, right now, we, we need urology, we need urology procedures here, but we simply don't have these paths that we've got. And our block time for things like ENT and cardiology, it's becoming a wrestling match. So once we, we get the anesthesia providers in place, the pre, post-op space, and that book for OR, we really, I, I think we'll be full again.
We currently have dietry and neurology renting space on campus, but they can't do cases here because we don't have the OR capacity. Do they take them to Yakima?
Yes. Left to do those.
All right. Do you have more pictures, Mandy? Or is that all?
I think that's it.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Ron?
I was just curious about the old, the tunnels, the abandoned piping system. You indicated maybe the work would be done by the time this meeting has happened. Has do, have you had success with that?
You bet. Yeah. So they, they have their.
And it clears out the new area to run the, the new stuff that has to run?
Yes, correct.
Ron, the CAT scan that we were getting, this here, historically, the one that we currently have, when we bought that CAT scan, it was a, a lot larger and more successful than the CAT scans they had down in Yakima. I was curious to see this new CAT scan, is that going to be, you know, that's above the CAT scans they have down Yakima? Because we have a newer one than they have down there.
I, I believe it has a bigger bore in it and it's, it's a bariatric CAT scan. And it has the features to do the intervention radiology, which Dr. Martin could probably help me with.
I know historically, our other CAT scan, we had a couple of people come up from out of the area because they could get a little bit better CAT scan when we bought that new CAT scan. And then down in Yakima, where they do the CAT scans down there, they did upgrade yours several years later. But I was just thinking, since we added another CAT scan here, we might have one of the most new CAT scans in Central Washington right now.
What, what are we getting, Ron?
I, I don't know what they have down in Yakima. I don't know how that compares at all. But we are getting a state of the art CAT center. So I would assume we're going to have one of the nicest ones. I know the MRI that we're getting is the same one that they use at Harborview.
Okay, thank you. I know that.
CT, the last CT that I'm working on, about 10 years old.
Any other questions or comments for Ron? Thank you, Ron. Okay, we move on to operations and start with Dee Dee Upli, CNO.
Dee. Thank you. My report starts on page 29. And I would like to add a few details to some of the items. I have a few questions. But just to let you know, for urgent care, we did get that X-ray machine installed and it is up and running as of yesterday. So that is working. I do want to talk about the same funding awarded and just give you a little more details about our same program. Pam Clements did a presentation. It's been a few years, I'm assuming, four or five years before the board. And our same program is our sexual assault nurse examiners. And I always hate to say that we have such a great program, because I wish we didn't have a program, but we do. As a rural area, our program is probably one of the stronger ones in the state. In fact, I'm receiving phone calls from other hospitals asking, how are we doing it? So Pam is still our coordinator. Unfortunately, we are right now down to just three nurses. They do not take call. But we did just send two nurses through the Harborview five day training. And they're in the process of being proctored and precepted. So we will be back up to five. Two of the three nurses are pediatric certified. And we do have Pam who is certified at an international level. So we do truly have an expert in our county. The, the program in the last 12 months, our latest numbers are we have done 24 forensic exams. She works very closely with our prosecuting attorney, with our victims advocacy group, law enforcement. And, you know, that, that relationship has maintained through many years, longer than me. So just know that she's back behind the scenes doing quite a lot of work. But I think one of the, the best parts about this report, again, a topic I wish we didn't have to talk about, is that we were reimbursed over $37,000 from, for money that we have spent on our same program through the state. So that check arrived today in the mail, and that will be deposited back into our same budget to continue with the great work and, and the education.
I remember, yeah, that was several years ago, but it was a very, very interesting, very powerful sort of presentation.
It truly takes a very special dynamic nurse to, to become certified. We don't force all of our nurses to do it. It is definitely not right for just anybody to do that exam. So I'm just, I'm really proud of the staff that we do have.
Thank you for calling attention to that.
The other, the other topic I, I have to talk about is the obeyed training and safety in the emergency department. As Mandy's report reflected, Julie's report reflected, we did just have a survey of patient safety. I think staff safety was definitely one of the. I think staff safety was definitely one of the themes that we heard loud and clear. This has been on my radar for years. I think it's been on the hospital's radar for years. We've done some amazing work through the years, but I know we can do more. So I just wanted to give you an update on some of the things that we are currently working on. Many of us just attended the AHA conference and Amanda and I attended one of the breakout sessions. I do have that PowerPoint that we, it actually gave me a couple of new ideas. So I look forward to working with our group here to see if we can get some of those in place. The other thing that we saw at the conference was some different technologies that are out there that I think we're going to, you know, maybe do some demos and, and see if that would be right for our, our organization. The, the last thing is we do have the AVE training. We have been doing this training now for years. We have an instructor that comes onsite and provides level one, two, and three training. He will be here next week and he's going to provide three level one classes. The time that he would have done that fourth level one class, we're bringing him to our emergency department to do a walkthrough with a small team. It includes Ron, facilities, you know, who oversees our Phoenix security. And I do, I have invited a couple of our nurses to attend.
Is the architect going to, are you making notes?
Ron's going to take notes. Yeah. Oh, you are going to, oh, wonderful. So we'll have a, a small group. Yes, sir.
Could you please tell the definition for what the word sane means and also what the word avid means? So that way people that don't know what they mean, they'll know what those terms mean.
So sane is our sexual assault nurse examiner, so especially trained nurse who, who takes care of a, a patient who arrives. And really anymore, you know, it's not just sexual assaults, but it's also intimate partner violence that they can help with any forensic. And then AVE, you know, I don't know if AVE actually stands for something. I'm going to have to look that up. It is the company we use that does our de-escalation workplace violence prevention education. And we bring an instructor on onsite. It's a four hour class, again, level one, level two, level three. So level one is just basically, you know, just kind of keep yourself safe, how to help de-escalate a patient or a person who might be, you know, getting upset. Level two takes it a little further and then level three is even higher where it's, it's even helping with some, teach some physical maneuvers to make sure you don't get hurt.
Okay, thank you. That way they know exactly do mean something or they're just a name of somebody.
Yeah, the, the walkthrough will really be a little environment, but depending on our time, we can talk about other policies. Because the gentleman who speaks is just phenomenal and, I mean, I can't thank the organization enough for you to bring him here and buy this education. It is mandatory that where we're, when somebody's hired on, we're automatically scheduling them for their first class.
Amanda, did you have something to add here?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that over the past year, that is, has been kind of an intentional strategy. We want to have our facilitator who's just fantastic. I've never been thanked so many times for a training in my life. But he, he went and did a clinic walkthrough as well and gave some tips for the clinic managers on some safety ideas. He did a home health specific training as well. And so he does have some really great specialized products and coaching and he's just fantastic. And he's going to be doing an overview hopefully with the safety committee again, just on the partnership that we have with KPH. He has continued to complement the organization and leadership. So thank you all for supporting your staff to go to this training because we do send all staff members. We feel it's really important. They'll get different levels depending on the type of job that they do. And right now we're so backed up because we just have had so many great new hires. But he, many organizations will only send certain staff, certain nurses, and, and we really have supported to try to make sure everybody has access to that information.
Yeah, with the increasing numbers of patients in the ED, yeah, and the annual health issues, I mean, it's probably not, not a direct correspondence, but there's an increase in, in violent incidents.
Absolutely. And, you know, we continue with our great relationship with Conference of Healthcare. We continue to meet with them monthly to talk about medical health, patients and their care. And right now I'm working on getting a meeting together and Andy probably doesn't know this yet, but I reached out to one of her, one of her nurses, Linda Navarre, we used to meet with law enforcement colleagues. And so we haven't met with them for probably a couple of years now. So we're getting that group back together where it's just a, just a check in and a touch, touch base on how we're doing. You know, patients from the, from the jail, corrections, you know, the patients that they bring into the emergency department. Wrong or both clearances?
We have a really great relationship with our local law enforcement, which not every hospital enjoys. That we communicate really well. We come up with strategies together and talk about what we could do differently after situations. We debrief with them and so that there were some incidents that led us to have those conversations and our workflows got a lot better. So I think that was a little bit by it laps along with, with COVID. But we do have a great relationship with them still and want to keep that going.
I have lots of other ideas, but you can hear about it next month. Any other questions?
Do we have, like, Ron is rotating from the jails to provide those services?
I'm sorry, what's up?
Do we have providers that rotate through or one provider is assigned?
For the mental health?
For the jail.
For the jail, yes. They, I believe they have a contract with Conference of Healthcare and they have somebody who's actually assigned to.
General medical, another contract with Compass Direct.
Or medical.
Medical and through KCHM, we've been providing substance use treatment for inpatient population.
I think Dr. Wright's going to take.
Dr. Wright will be continuing that after Dr. Ezra goes retirement.
And, you know, corrections has done, they're, they're another area that's done a lot of great work, receiving grants and doing these programs in the jail, which is helping to keep patients out of the emergency department.
Would it be appropriate if one or more commissioners stop by and see the AVE training at some point or would that be intrusive? You don't have to answer now.
I think that.
Yeah, I really get off of this train.
Hey, just calm down.
Absolutely.
Relax. It's okay.
You can never say that.
Oh, sorry. I need the training, I suppose.
Amanda may know.
Yeah. I would be happy, absolutely. Just get, get in touch with me if you're interested and I can kind of talk to you about the scheduling and when the classes are. And we do have quite a backlog of employees, but we can, we can take a look at that. And we do have, we would like to eventually have volunteers as well. We've, and a security team, they have their own type of training, but we really want to get them involved in the future as well.
Obviously, Amanda, if you have a backlog, I don't think, and I know John wouldn't want to bump anybody who's actually in the, you know, in the ED or something.
Well, we'll, we'll keep in touch about it. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just keep, keep it.
Thanks.
Other?
AVE should be a, a primary education for everyone in this country. Period.
Okay. Thank you. Good to hear from you. All right. Are there any other questions or comments for Dee? Thank you very much, Dee. Next up, we have Ron Oldner, Chief Analyst, Lary Office.
My report begins on page 32 and I think the only update I have for you now is just the letter that was at the place from Ellensburg High School, just an appreciation of Zane Davies. I, I get probably two or three letters a year from the high school just thanking us for the support. So thank you very much. The work that he does is really appreciated by the schools and by the students. He's, he's doing a tremendous job in that role. I think it's his fourth. Yeah. Pretty amazing.
So Ron, you have your pulse on the upper county. What's, with this 47 degrees north, I'm just trying to figure out, like, there's all this opposition to it, all these concerns being raised about it. But is it basically just a fait accompli and everyone's just sort of shouting at the, shouting into the void and nothing's going to happen? Or is, or is this actually going to be adjusted or stopped or any idea?
I don't know. I know that.
Your crystal ball.
My crystal ball, 2,600 letters of opposition was the last that I heard and only one letter for it in support of it. And that was from an organization that built manufactured homes. So I think that was probably the reason why they supported it.
Was, was it 2,600 letters from the same person?
No.
Okay, so different individuals.
And I do really feel like District One and District Two's involvement in pointing out some of the things that were maybe amiss in the application or in the CIPA itself, really helped strengthen maybe the case against it and maybe slowed the process down a little bit. Because when we first started getting involved, it really did seem like a slam dunk and it was just going to be basically rubber stamped. And we, we even saw that with our application. They submitted their application, their boundary line adjustments, their subdivision adjustments, everything submitted at the same time for approval, which really will make things go much faster. And I think the work that we've done and with the help of our attorney, we've slowed it down a little bit. And I know that in the mayoral election that's coming up will probably be very pivotal because our current mayor, I believe, is for it. And I believe some of the candidates are against it. So I think that that will come to play in the election.
But to Ron's point about Hospital District One and Hospital District Two engaging in this, they have still not answered our concerns about mitigating additional volumes without the levy support for Hospital District Two and what it might mean in terms of out of district transports for Medic One up there. So we still have not received any satisfactory answers of how both, either one of the hospital districts' concerns are being addressed. Fair to say?
Fair to say.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions?
The whole hospice, I always like hearing about the new, just the new enhancements to services that help patients and families understand services better. Was there anything before? Is this just a new?
I meant to bring you a brochure tonight and I forgot, so I will make sure that you get one for the next meeting. We give each patient a, a little notebook binder. And so it was to kind of put inside the binder to explain what each staff member's role is. It's just pretty overwhelming when you first sign on service and you've got this whole team that's coming to meet you and you're overwhelmed with that diagnosis and overwhelmed with people coming in your home. But really to help explain what each person does on the team and why it's important. So it, we felt it would be helpful too, like with consults that Dr. Martin does or even our RNs do out at the home as well.
So I was seeing that.
I'm sorry, I forgot to do those.
Did the donation come through from the Adams family?
Yes.
It did?
It did. So, and so with Hospital District Two's purchase of a church across the street from FMC, they did give back a $200,000 donation to the foundation that we will be able to use to remodel that building. So it was a very nice donation to the foundation.
Before we move on, I just want to mention to the, to the board, just call your attention, there's a copy of a letter from Jeff Achimato about Zane Davies' work as a trainer for the high school athletes. So you guys may want to look at that. Any other questions for Ron?
I, I was just going to ask, you know, your lab things, comments that the new analyzer could be onsite by July 24th. Did that happen yet or what's happening?
No, I don't think it's here yet. Ron, do you have an update?
31st, 31st. Start installing that.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Next up, we have Stacy Alea, Chief of Clinic Operations.
My report starts on page 33 and I'll add a little bit more information about rapid access that is not in this report. As we said earlier, we've seen about 800, more than 800 patients since we opened on May 1st. Both of these patients are from Ellensburg, probably almost 80%. But we are seeing patients drive in from Cleland, Roslyn and Ronald and Kidde Tass to come to that clinic. Our primary group we're seeing is defined as middle age, 45 to 64. The second largest is our senior population and then our pediatrics. So a really good mix and to be able to add those visits has been a huge service. We've been doing patient satisfaction surveys with them on paper. Most of the scores on a scale of zero to 10, with 10 being excellent, have rated the front end staff a nine or a 10. The MA a nine or a 10, likely to recommend has come back at a nine or a 10. And also level of concern that provider, care provider is showing. Feedback has been positive and very thankful that they've been able to be seen same day. So these are for mainly acute visits. The goal is that you call your primary care provider first. If the clinic cannot get you in, that staff can say, we do have a rapid access clinic available for you. We can either schedule an appointment or they do take walk-ins. So right now about 75% of our patients are being scheduled, 25% are choosing to walk in.
Put a number, you said mostly nines and tens, but mostly 90%.
And the clinic staff is really being commended. They spun this up and I, you know, we heard immediately from the triage nurses in the clinic, it felt so good to have someone and somewhere to send these patients immediately to be seen. So again, it was well designed and very well executed by the clinic staff.
How's the usage on Saturdays? Is it?
Our Saturdays are, are lowest value. We have seen anywhere from two patients on a Saturday to, I think our highest one has been nine. We are seeing providers who are on call Saturday referring patients to rapid access instead of referring them to outside KPH or even referring them to the emergency room. So we do have a lot of who broke the Saturday.
And as we get more public with it, people become more aware.
Yes. I think one of the things that makes rapid access appealing is that unlike urgent care, it's billed just like a primary care visit. So it's billed just as though you've seen the provider in your own clinic.
Plus, it's, it's exclusively for, for established KPH patients.
Correct.
So as a recovering primary care physician, it's the advantage of having that note in our system is huge. We aren't relying on getting records from Kidde Tass Urgent Care or from some other provider. It's in the follow-up is usually, we're hoping to have follow-up scheduled with the PCP from rapid access.
And what's been nice is working on warm handoff. So if you do come in for something more complicated or an imaging exam or a lab shows something that we didn't talk about in rapid access, that rapid access provider can contact your PCP and do that handoff right away.
Know we're also working with Mandy to, to get a GEMBET to rapid access.
Yes, we are.
Could, I have a question on the dashboard. Can you tell me what a new patient is? You have a little note here. I just want to go in.
A new patient would be a patient that has not been seen and commuted in the last three years. And that's a mix of both our primary care and looking at our specialty clinics.
So we're adding?
We're adding almost 800. We're down a little bit. We're at ending almost 800 new patients.
Yeah.
At our last meeting, last month, Scott talked about how our clinics are now seeing two times more people than they used to see historically. So is this one of the reasons that we're seeing more patients? Because we're seeing more new patients other than the patient coming in multiple times? Because it's interesting that our clinics are seeing twice as many patients than they used to see because they're, that's one reason why they're, they're so full and we had to come up with a rapid access so that the other patients could be seen.
Yeah. It, it's actually about 50% more. Some of that is because we've added new services. So, you know, we, we didn't used to count vascular surgery visits or ENT visits. We didn't own pediatrics, so we didn't count those visits. But the, the number that was in the, the presentation I gave you last month was that in 2019, we had 66,000 clinic visits and in 2023, we're on track for about 99,600. So just about a 50% increase.
So we're almost 100,000 visits now.
Yes.
That's, that's quite a few visits.
Just formed by this new patients graph, I was reading it incorrectly previously. I thought it meant new to any particular specialty or clinic, but this is new to the organization in that they not. But this is new to the organization in that they not, I'm getting this right, no other clinic or specialty in the last three years?
Correct. So, and that's why when we look at our rapid access, we can take a patient who's had a visit with us within the last three years. That's how we define new patients is we haven't seen them for three years.
A quick question, internal medicine locum, how do you say?
Dr. Dumont Dier.
Dumont Dier. How long was this doctor with us?
He came in March and he would really like to come back. He's a skier. So he is trying to convince his wife to spend winter out here. That's an ongoing discussion.
And I imagine a lot of these locums patients probably get off of them. It's great.
Yes.
But then they, their job is to go fill voids where they're needed. And so they go to the next place if that's a situation.
It, that is, and a lot of them like to do it. They do it to see different parts of the country. They do it to move closer to family for a couple of months. It gives them a lot of flexibility and some of them just like the challenge of always being in a new area and meeting new clinics and meeting new patients.
So great for them, but sad for us, we'll have to say goodbye to the sad patients. Yeah. Okay. But grateful for their service.
Particularly in internal medicine, they've had some outstanding locums then. It has been hard to see them though.
Okay. Yeah, I think especially the new, when you look at the new patients, I think it puts things in context and especially with what Dr. Wright said a minute ago, you know, if you look back five, 10 years ago, the additional services that we, that we offer now that we didn't have then has increased volume. But it's also just an increase in volume in services we've had forever. So it's, it's hard to, I mean, the board has had access at the top of its, of its kind of strategic plan from the beginning. And it seems like we're having, we're trying to keep up with, with increasing demand and, and we've managed with, with all the new services that expand services in the county. And we've managed to expand access to, to our clinics and access to ED and access, you know, to, you know, surgeries and just everything. But it's, the demand just keeps growing and, and sort of we're doing our best, I guess. Where we're at. I don't know if anybody has any, any sort of capper to that.
I can't say an additional piece we're doing at Family Medicine in Ellensburg. It's the provider on call for the day. We've actually, it was started asking the 4th of July. We are adhering that calendar schedule with the goal to try to make sure we can fit in our ED follow-up visits for our patients and also provide some same-day access in that clinic. So not only are we using rapid access, but we are making some adjustments in family medicine. If that goes well, we are talking about, could we roll that out to Cleland? Could we roll that out to internal med to help increase access there?
Quick follow-ups. Like the departure of Dr. D, who I can speak firsthand from some people I know just adored him. What, what happens to a patient like that? We have a locum come in, build a short-term relationship with somebody and then their contract, you know, we know they're, they're going to leave and cycle through like a substitute teacher. What do we do? What are our patients expected to do as that person that got the note for the last couple of months departs?
What we've done is we've really tried to keep your primary care provider assigned as one of the providers of the clinic. So it's really focusing on as a care team and that we transition the care to one of the other providers.
So your primary is somebody here permanently, but you might get to see somebody such as Dr. D to fit you in the schedule?
That is our goal, yes. Dr. D's been really good. He has had the flexibility where he has picked up a lot of the same-day appointments. The goal is that you are seen as a team, part of a team, and the clinic communicates well. The providers all work well too.
Any else for Stacy? Thank you, Stacy. Next up then, we have medical staff. We have our chief of staff, Dr. Hoppy. And we have a big list here this year that we, that we all, I assume everybody had a chance to review that online on the platform. Dr. Hoppy, any, anything specific that you want to talk about with the appointments and reappointments?
No, just that we've been fairly busy. This is again, really a busy month here for the MECC. Most of the appointments are for the new people coming in. These are anesthesia appointments, some ER appointments, and then the on-rad providers. But we continue to be really quite busy on the MECC approving all these credentials. So I just want to thank my colleagues for all their work that they're putting into this, so.
Okay, so we have the MECC recommendations for appointments and reappointments listed on page 36. Do I have a motion?
Can I pass something in quickly? I'm just curious if this was only my experience on my, my computer. There were some files that I think were supposed to be there, but they're not an icon for me to click on. Thankfully, it was nothing that would have swayed my decision. But is that just a me thing or is anybody else experiencing that too?
I was able to access everything I wanted to look at.
Yeah, I was too. I know Shannon told me that you sent her an email asking questions. So did she beat your expectation?
I'm still, we still need to connect on that, but I'm just wondering if it, I mean, if it's more of an IT thing and it's my own personal computer, then I wouldn't expect anybody else to fix that.
I had a couple of that I couldn't open, but then I shut, restarted my computer. Cause it's a great lot of documents.
Right. So I did it, I worked on it two separate days. There was one where there was a, there was a letter of recommendation. I think there should have been a icon or, I mean, there are letters, fine. But so I've never had that happen before. Hopefully not again. Hopefully it's just a fluke.
I would, if you have a chance to sit down with Shannon.
Okay. I should have screenshot it. It happened again.
Yeah, I would sit down and chat with her. Do you feel comfortable?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we have the list of appointments and reappointments here on page 36. I have a motion to approve MECC's recommendation. Motion from Bob.
Second.
Second from John. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this list of initial appointments and reappointments and additional privileges, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous. And Dr. Hoppy, you also have donation privileges for emergency med?
Yes, Dr. Schmelzer helped us redefine the delineations of privileges for emergency medicine and just some minor edits. One is we broke out the sedation to be either conscious sedation or deep sedation. And then we took it, two other procedures off those delineation of privileges. And so this was reviewed by the MECC and felt to be appropriate, so.
And Dr. Hoppy, I appreciate you're having the sort of frac changes version here. It allows us to sort of see what's, you know, what's actually being adjusted. So thank you for that. Everybody had a chance to look at what's being changed here.
I was just going to ask Dr. Hoppy to expand on, we're deleting the requirement for two providers for moderate sedation. I just wonder if you can explain for the group the thinking behind that?
Yeah, and I think it has to do kind of with their, their level of experience with moderate sedation. And so there may be providers that are not comfortable with that. And so if so, we would probably take that off of their credentials. And usually it's what they're requesting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Hoppy about the emergency medicine donation privileges? Okay, and so this is something we need to approve, I see. And I have a motion to approve donation of privileges for emergency medicine as recommended by MECC. Motion from Erica. Okay, second from Terry. Any further discussion or questions for Dr. Hoppy? Hey, all those in favor of the donation privileges, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Dr. Hoppy.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our chief medical officer, Dr. Martin.
Our report begins on page 41. I have a couple of updates. I mentioned that we had interviewed a dermatology APC. That offer has been accepted. Interviewed a family medicine for an adult medicine physician. We did not extend an offer. And I mentioned that the Royal Collaborative was to meet Monday 24th. I was in the employee forum rather than at that meeting, so I can't speak to the proceedings. The other thing I would call out, which Dr. Hoppy's report from the Medical Executive Committee is a longer slate than we're used to. A lot of that is Evergreen Anesthesia coming on board to augment our throughput in the OR. Some of that is emergency associates of Yakima staffing up to make sure they have better strength to make sure we're covered. But this is normally a slack time for recruiting and you can't tell it by, by looking at CAT's calendar. One of the trends that we saw last year was that by February, just about every resident that was going to graduate in June had signed a contract. And the labor market was competitive enough that if they hadn't signed a contract, we probably didn't want to offer them. Right now, we're talking to doctors that were graduating their training in July and August of next year.
We've met some great candidates from.
There is one, one that I alluded to in here that we're looking forward to adding to Family Medicine Cleland next summer. It's just a dynamic young physician. My goal has always been to try to have, one of the things that happened when I first came here was we had a very generational medical community. I replaced Don Solberg and he was the first retirement out of the string. I've been trying to get a mix of new grads and mid-career providers so that we don't see the entire medical community get their 70s at the same time. And I think we're, I think we're accomplishing. We're going to be talking to a lot of family physicians over the next six months and including one event at Wood, which will be predominantly mid-career. I'll take any questions.
The only thing I had here, I think, is you also chaired another ethics committee meeting recently.
Yes.
Co-chair. And yeah, so I think, you've mentioned this, but Dr. Martin and I are both on the ethics committee and Dr. Martin is co-chairing it. It'll be a really good resource, I think, statewide.
And very well received. We're, we're hoping that that's going to evolve into a regional resource to offer consultation services for smaller rural hospitals that can't field their own ethics committee. We have the advantage, and a lot of this is actually, the core of this group is the group that was working on regional triage during the COVID pandemic. And what we discovered was that we had a lot of expertise in rural Washington that there are different ethical concerns that come up in rural Washington than at UW. At UW, you aren't as concerned about what happens if a patient that you treated that had a bad outcome through no fault of yours shows up at a softball game and misrepresents the care. That's actually one of the textbook case studies for rural ethics. And it's incredibly rewarding work and I'm glad that Matt's been able to participate in working and lead. My co-chair is actually something, he's a CFO with a doctorate in divinity who is the head of the ethics committee at Forks.
A CFO with a degree in divinity, that's just wrong.
Nope, no, not the candy.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin, for the work you're doing. It's awesome.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, I keep asking him, money is the root of all evil.
I could show that Scott O'lander said this. All right. Any, any other questions for, or any questions for Dr. Martin?
The Evergreen, I agree.
Yes.
They settling in? How do you feel about the trans?
So far, there's, they're still doing call coverage. We're hearing good things. The providers that we've had on site have been easy to work with, accommodating. I don't know whether our existing providers are going to reach terms with them. I hope they will. But I, I think that, again, having essentially two providers covering two operating rooms, labor and delivery and the emergency room is asking a lot. And I think Ken and Randy are looking forward to not being on call for a couple of weeks or have been enjoying not being on call.
I understand they've identified, Evergreen's identified at least one, but the core group they're going to place there and they're interviewing a couple of additional ones in the next week. But overall, having all of those providers credentials here is, I think, makes the entire surgery team and OB team feel really good.
So it'll remove critical friction point that slows down being able to?
And frankly, limits the volume of services we can provide. So if we have a mom that needs an epidural, does that mean that we delay a surgery case? Or that we finish a surgery case and delay the epidural? We're going to get away from that. We won't have somebody dedicated to labor and delivery. One of the things that I heard about Evergreen when we were early in the process was they were saying that for the first time in several months, they were fully staffed because their principals were having full addition shifts to maintain coverage. And they apologized to one of their client hospitals and the client said, when you were short staffed, there was no gap in service. But I appreciate that ability to extend and flex with the original group of providers. So much less, we're much less likely to break them with our volumes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for Dr. Martin? Thank you very much, Dr. Martin. All right, on the finance, our CFO, Scott O'lander.
Thank you. I'd like to start with a little bit of a historical graph. And so it's for historical information. And so it's on page 47 of the fourth packet. Yeah. It's, it's clinical visits, it's other surgeries that drive the revenue for the organization. And so on, on page 47, first line I'd like to look at is line 22. And, and this is clinic visits and visits to the hospital. And back in 2016, we did a total of 48,525 clinic visits. And in, right now, annualized, we're on pace to do 90,796 visits. So that's significant growth. And if you look at 2022 clinic visits, we did 82,054 clinic visits. So we're up almost 9,000, trending at 9,000 additional clinic visits in 2023 and in 2022. And you see that, that, that steady increase in growth. And as Matt has said, is the, the goal of the organization is access where I communicate to providers. And so you can see that we're, with the challenges of physician recruitment and doctors leaving and everything else, we're still growing the number of patients that we're able to see in the, in our clinic system.
And that does, that is, I mean, that does, it's worth emphasizing, right? When you look at the trend from 2016 to 2023, that's, that's impressive on its own. But in one year, an additional, what, 8,800 clinic visits?
Yeah.
In one year?
In one year. That's, and that's, and the challenges that our visitors have pointed out, turnover, were, are real. And, but we, we're filling with locum providers and other temporary providers that we're bringing in here to make sure we're trying to serve our, our community.
But the frustrating thing is even though we've added 800 slots this last year, it's still not enough.
That's correct.
That we, as quick as we can grow, the need, it seems to be growing even quicker.
Yeah. Well, and I, I feel like a broken record here, but unlike most rural communities, we are growing. Most rural communities are contracting. Most rural communities are getting older and we're statistically getting younger. So we have all the challenges of recruiting into a rural population. So we have all the challenges of recruiting into a rural population, but we have to do it at double time.
The other challenge, we talked about staffing. But that increased throughput uses space. And one of the challenges we're going to be faced with sooner rather than later is where to put our providers. We moved from 7,000 square feet to 11,000 square feet and I'm running out of room.
And hence the, I mean, it's why we added the MAC, it's why we've done various things, why we're, you know, we have rehab out there. Yeah, so it's related.
And can I just say, I, I'll stop talking in a second, Scott. We talked a lot about providers, but you know, a few years ago, we started the MA apprenticeship program with two slots, I think, to get in. And, and how many MA apprentices did we have there?
Oh gosh, I think we graduated somewhere between 15 to 19 that we work. And we tried to take, we're up to the point now where we need to take about three a quarter. And it takes them a year to go through the program. They start independent at nine months and then another three months of independent work. And they graduate and they're allowed to take the certification exam.
One thing, just to mention that, one of the things I, I did when I was last president was I would write congratulatory notes to the people. Not sure if you were aware of that, but if you wouldn't mind getting me, getting in touch with me when, when we have graduates in that program.
You want more notes now?
I'd love more notes.
But as Dr. Martin says, medicine is a team sport. So when we add a provider, we need to add those MA nurses, clinic nurses. We've had some great success from nursing physicians recently. This year, we started our pharmacy tech apprenticeship program and they're doing the pharmacy refills for Family Medicine Ellensburg. About 80 a day, 80 to 100 refills a day, seem to add Cleveland. They don't think Cleveland wants it to come sooner rather than later, I think, to do that. So we're graduating our own pharmacy techs and Amanda is working on a CMA apprenticeship program as well. So we grow these folks and we have a tendency to capture them. They're from our community and they know KPH, so.
Well, that's it for Scott, so let's move.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Scott.
A few more things I, just a quick comment on the CMA. I think that's a great idea. That's it, you know, introductory area into healthcare.
And we're partnering, jump in, Amanda, anytime, but we, we don't partner with CHCW on that.
Okay, Scott.
It's about growth of the organization again. The, it's back in 2016, we have 440, oh, I'm, I'm on, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm on line 24 this time, 47, on page, still page 47. Back in 2016, we had almost 450 employees. And right now, we're at 604 employees and that includes nurses, MAs and doctors. So we have increased a significant number of employees and, and the related expense related to taking care of those, the staff. And then as we've talked about the volume through the emergency department, on line 11, as you see, emergency department volume back in 2016, we're at 13,789 patients on, we're now trending in 2023 at 17,064. And in 2022, we were at 15,643. And so for many years, our volume was relatively flat in the emergency department. But in the last two years, it has, it's increased significantly.
Amanda, did you want to say something about the growth in employees or something? Is that why you, sorry, I thought...
Oh, no, yeah, I just was ready to be cued if you wanted to hear about it more. But yeah, we're really excited and I'll update my board report with more information on that next month. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Amanda.
One quick thing, we're using the term MA and since this is a public meeting, a lot of people may not know what the term MA stands for. It's a medical assistant. They help support the nurses, the doctors, they do a lot of other things in the clinic when a patient comes in and visits. And so consequently, creating more medical assistants in, in our facility is a great way of creating those. And then the other thing, a lot of times, MAs, once they start in the healthcare, they actually grow up and want to become a nurse or some other things. So that's one reason why we generate a lot of medical assistance personally here. So we have all the support we need. So the term MA stands for medical assistant. I just want everybody to know what that term means. Sorry if I interrupted you, Scott.
Thank you, thank you. So the next line I'd like to just look at briefly is line 10, NGI procedures that KPH does. And back in 2016, we did 1,510 GI procedures, or excuse me, if I'm going, I'm on the wrong line. 1,396 GI procedures. We're on pace this year to do 2019. And in 2022, we did 1,404. On line nine, this is surgical procedures. In 2016, we did 1,510 and we're on pace right now to do 2,351. And last year, in '22, we did 1,922. And so all of, all of these increases in patient volumes and clinic visits, ER visits, in GI procedures, surgical procedures, et cetera, are the reasons for the, the growth that we're seeing. And then just now, on just the financial side, on line nine is our cash that KPH has. This is...
Line eight, cash on hand.
Cash on hand. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, line eight, cash on hand. Thank you, John. In 2016, our, our total cash investments was $29,859,000. At the end of 2022, we had $73,241,000 in, available to the hospital. Right now, we're at about $70 million. And these are funds that we are using to expand the surgery, the, the surgery expansion project that Ron talked about, to buy equipment and to do other things. And so this is just, this is just an indication of the financial strength of the organization. So anyhow, I'll stop with the history lesson now and move to...
2016, I think that's when Erica Baum and I came on the board, so. I think we should say credit for all of this. Go ahead, Scott.
What can you say? But I, I think one thing to be interesting to point out is most rural hospitals are not as financially strong as we are. And a lot of them are losing money each year, which is like slowly flying a plane into the ground. Eventually, there's a price to pay. So we're fortunate, like Julie pointed out, that we've got the demographics and stuff to maintain financial viability if we're smart with our decision.
Oh, and I think part, sorry, Scott, everybody's got something to add. Part of, in addition to things like the expansion, Finance Committee is well aware that we are investing. It's going to be a tough four or five months because we've invested in anesthesia. We've invested in growing the emergency department staff. So why, because we want to be ready, once the expansion project is done, to hit the ground running to start satisfying these additional volumes. If you don't have the historical financial strength, you, you can't do that. So we've been able to make those investments to, to work with the providers to do that so that we're building the bandwidth that we need to serve additional patients as our new services come online.
And Scott, you mentioned this almost as an aside, but the reason we have this is to invest in new services. This is a, we're not, we're not for profit, we are not...
All, all of, all of the earnings, a hospital are invested in either new equipment or salaries and wages for staff and compensation for physician providers. So. If we can move to page 46, and this is, we'll just talk about, start to talk about June activity and volume that we've seen. And line one is admissions, admissions are lower than budget. And line two, patient days are lower than budget. But what we are seeing is that there has been a shift to outpatient or observation care. And so the, let me get my right locking here. Observation days. Line 21, line 21 is our observation days. And our budget was 95, we had 142 observation days. And so a shift from inpatient revenue to outpatient revenue.
Now, this is, I know, Scott, this is a, this is a general trend in healthcare, it's not just us. But what are the, what are the explanations for this? Is it that, is it that procedures are, are getting better? Is it that there's, there's sort of economic pressure? What's the explanation of why that should change?
There's multiple factors. One significant factor for us is our new orthopedic surgeon, Dr. Tony Longo. Is, he is quicker in the OR than a previous surgeon. Yeah, his, to meet an inpatient criteria for a Medicare patient, for a total, if a total joint, a patient needs to be, hit the two midnight rule, they call it. And Dr. Longo, his, his surgical time is about 20%, 50 to 20% less than. So there's lower charges for the, the surgical time. And then his patients are ready to go home in, in one day or a day and a half. And so there's the lower, lower overall charges to the patient, but they're, they're, they're home quicker. And so some of it is efficiency. That is, that is a significant trend. One of the other trends just this current year is our OB volume has, is bold budget. And, and deliveries, when women are admitted to the hospital to deliver a baby, that is patient care because we're not delivering as many cases, babies, as we did last year. That's, that's been a factor in our patient days and admissions. Significant drivers of revenue for the organization. At line 12, outpatient procedures, outpatient surgical procedures, we were budgeted for 135. We did 182 in June. And then year to date through the first six months, we've done 1,049 outpatient procedures. We are budgeted for 798. And last year, we had done, through June of last year, we had done 709 surgical procedures. Line 13, GI procedures, we did 176 in June. We were budgeted for 135. Year to date, we have done 101 GI procedures.
1,001.
1,001, thank you. I'm sorry, thank you, 1,001. And we are budgeted for 801. And last year at this time, we had done 694. The emergency department has been quite busy and it's been commented. In June, we did 1,456 ER visits. We were budgeted for 1,357. Year to date, 8,462. Budget was 8,036. Last year at this time, we had done 7,281. So we're up almost 800, just or about, just about 800 visits. So anyway, these are the drivers of revenue that we have, we have seen. And then lastly, line 28, clinic visits. We were a little below budget for the month of June in clinic visits, just primarily due to physician vacations and people out. For, so we did 6,920 patient visits. We were budgeted to do 7,747. Year to date, we've done 45,025 visits versus a budget of 45,591. Last year at this time, we had done 43,899. Then if we could go over to our financial statement on page, page 49, you can see with the total revenue for the hospital in the first column, $19,934,000. A little ahead of budget by $180,000 for the month.
So that's how much we billed to the month of June?
That is gross, gross charges for the month of June. And then, but year to date, we have charged 122,369,000 versus a budget of 116 million. And then this time, prior through June of 2022, we had, had charged 101,689. So you see significant growth in revenue. It's been driven primarily by surgical procedures and additional ER visits. And then the strong volume through the clinic. The volume through the clinic is significant because when a patient comes in the clinic, a doctor usually orders some lab work. He orders an X-ray based on what the patient presents with. There is some ancillary things that are ordered. So those clinic visits that they generate hospital revenue and services here at the hospital also. For, so we're grateful for those primary care and specialty providers that are serving our patients. So June was, year to date, we've over budgeted on revenue, $5.5 million. Other operating revenue, about a third of the way down the page, was a, a positive variance for the hospital of, by $34,000. We've seen some additional 340B revenue that has helped us from pharmacy. And we've also, in last month, we got a, a grant from the Transformation Grant from the Medicaid, $45,000, which helped for that positive variance. On salaries, we are below budget on salaries. By $310,000, $350,000, excuse me. Our temporary labor, we were a little ahead of temporary labor, but we have been reducing the number of, of, amount of contract nurses that we have in here. So we're hiring as, we're hiring more staff. And rather than contracting with these expensive contract traveling nurses and other contract staff. Benefits were below budget. Professional fees were over budget by 279,000. Most of that variance is due to OB providers that we are providing to make sure we have OB coverage for our community. We also have, in internal medicine, we have locum tenens, short-term providers that are in that positive variance. And where else are we using them, Dr. Martin?
Pediatrics.
Pediatrics, yep. And so that's, that's the reason for that variance. And you look at year to date on professional services, we have a variance. We've spent $2.1 million. Year to date, we had budgeted to spend $961,000. We've spent 1.1 million, 1,167,000 dollars more this, this year than we have. We've spent that so we can have access for patients in the community. Supplies, that variance on supplies was $419,000. That was driven primarily by surgery, surgery volumes that are going through the ROR. So we had total expenses for the month were 10, 10,699,000. A negative, negative variance of $799,000. But the reason for that is trying to continue to serve the community and have additional staffing for physician providers and then other staffing and temporary labor. So for the month, we made from operations, $11,000 for the month. Year to date, we've, the organization's made $1.6 million. We're a little behind budget. We've had budget to be at 40, 4.9 million. We had interest earnings from, of non-operating of $85,000. So we had a net income for the month of $97,368. And year to date, we've made $3,019,000. We're still a little behind what we had expected. We had budgeted to be at $5.6 million. But ironically, we're a little ahead of where we were last year. But ironically, we're a little ahead of where we were last year. So for the month, all in all, not bad. Any questions about stats that I talked about or June's financials? I would like to talk just a little bit about our balance sheet on line, page 50. We have a very strong balance sheet. We have cash on hand. It shows the, it's the first line on the balance sheet is 1,952,000 dollars. That's just the cash readily in the bank. We have investments that we have of 63 million dollars. And so, so our total cash and investments for debt security, debt services of 1.4 million and 63 million dollars. So we have approximately 7 million dollars in cash investments on hand that to do the expansion that we have ongoing right now and acquire additional property to expand services for the hospital. So we have a, one of the stronger balance sheets of hospitals in, around right now. We have, many hospitals are losing money from operations. KBH so far has been able to earn, earn money.
I did get an update from the Washington. I've been talking about gearing reports coming in for the big hospital systems. The Washington State Hospital Association anticipates that in Washington state, that accumulated loss in 2022 is going to be over $2 billion. So again, I, I just waving the flag that as you see these huge systems losing 850 million dollars in a single year, we may very well see that impact in services that they will be closing. I, we're already seeing some labor issues. I think Kaiser had some picketing going on last week. And so it's, as they go into their budget season, as they come to terms with the $2 billion loss. I'm, my, I'm fearful we're not going to be able to refer patients the way we need to and that those transfers are going to get more and more difficult for us. So stay tuned.
If, if you would, page 48 is just the financial dashboard for the organization. So that it shows just a summary of what we had talked about. It showed that we have from operations, we made 11 million or 11,673 dollars. Our days and accounts received will remain steady at about 67. Our days cash on hand are about 210 days cash on hand. So that is a very, very strong position. And that days cash on hand means that if you didn't bring another penny into the organization, we could still continue spending money as we are spending for another 210 days. So that's.
Not every rural hospital has that number.
Like, not even some of the big hospitals. And so then you see our payer mix of pretty steady payer mix. About 43% Medicare, 19% Medicaid, almost 33% commercial, about one and a half percent self-paid and then 3.6% other. And then the other.
It says series one, series two, that's actual and budget. Is that, but the three solid versus the three dash lines?
The dominant line is the budget.
Budget.
Yep, yep.
I, I think it's interesting on the payer mix, it can really show the difference of how we're getting paid because the commercial insurance has gone down some. The self-pay has gone down some, but the Medicare and Medicaid has gone up a little bit. So. A lot of that might have to do with the number of baby boomers out there that are now getting older and have healthcare. So consequently, that is one of the things. And I know it's history wise, if we bill out a dollar to Medicare, we get about 65 cents on it while we would get close to 100% of that from cor- commercial insurance. So it, it costs us, we lose a little bit of our billing to Medicare patients as opposed to when we are dealing with working patients. So that will hopefully doesn't impact our finance too much in the future because we're doing a lot of other things to reduce the cost in the organization. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
So overall collections is about 50%? Is that correct?
Just over 50 cents, it's about 52, 53% in that, in aggregate. That's total. Medicare's less than that, Medicaid, Medicaid less than that. Commercial higher.
Oh, okay. So if we bill a dollar, we get less than 50% of it from Medicaid and Medicare?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And then the, the last thing, if there's no other question, I'd like to talk on, on page 45. And this is the quarterly capital update. Of the, in the second quarter on our surgery expansion budget that we have, the big hole in the back of the hospital is we've spent 2.1 million dollars. Laboratory expansion in, this is a project that started in 2022. And we've spent a total of 2.1 million dollars and we nearly doubled the, the space that the laboratory occupies. As Rhonda said, shortly, we're going to have a new chemistry analyzer that is going to be delivered shortly that has redundancy. And it will, it will, there will be a lot of additional tests that we will be able to perform and have results back quickly with this new analyzer. It's, this is the very large piece of equipment. Fill up just about this 32 feet.
That wall, that wall.
We'll have a gimba for you and supply stuff.
Looking forward to it. Jeff commented to new analyzer.
It's actually, yeah, it is. It's, it's a Beckman Coulter analyzer. And so that, that will be coming in. And, and had we not done the laboratory expansion, it, we could not have purchased this analyzer. And then the other, the other project that, that we did is we renovated our cafeteria last year. We added. If we can, 450 at least square feet to the cafeteria and then just changed the whole workflow that ends. So this is for staff and families. And then we have the energy efficiency project. We've spent 2.4, almost 2.5 million dollars on the energy efficiency project. And this covers the whole, all of lighting in the hospital to domestic hot water, ER fan walls, surgery fan walls. And then we still have a couple of other parts of the project to be completed.
We've got grants for some of that.
And we have a half a million dollar Department of Commerce grant that to offset some of that cost. And then the, the, the north parking lot that we did here to create some additional parking for the expansion project is completed and it's being capitalized. The total cost for that project is 453,000 dollars. And then the MRI pad on the other side of the hospital so that we can have, continue to have MRI services during the expansion is completed at a total cost of 263,000 dollars. And then some of the work with campus redesign is 240,000 dollars. So we have, in the, in this last quarter, we've spent 2.7 million dollars on expanding the hospital to serve the community. And I will say that we, although we borrowed money to do this expansion, I have not had, we have funded this with operations. I've not had to pull any of those borrowed funds out of the local government investment pool to do this so far. So we've, we're generating a very positive cash flow for the operations. So we're able to fund these operations.
So the, the current bond money that we have on deposit is making us too much money right now?
It is.
Okay, so it's covering the, the debt, so the debt is elaborate?
Yeah. Okay, yep.
Get another 71,000 dollar grant for the.
Good, I didn't know about that. Did we smile? I'm sorry.
Trying to pull a smile down a little bit.
Any questions?
Questions for Scott? Well, we appreciate you walking us through all these numbers. It's very, very informative, thank you.
So my, my favorite numbers are always the cost per adjusted patient day. And I just want to point out that I.
Which page are you on?
I am on page 46, I believe.
46, yep.
46. And I've always said a, a well-used critical access hospital is a efficient hospital. And our cost per adjusted patient day is under budget and looks like it is virtually the same as it was last year.
Despite a wage increase.
Inside of increases.
And supply expenses.
So we're off some wage increases by efficiency then?
Well, so again, if you have one patient in your critical care unit, you still have two nurses, you still have a unit to support. If you have five patients and they could have, and we've seen such an increase in inpatients and throughout the organization. So that overhead, administrative overhead has not grown. It does result in additional efficiency.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to say anything. In the finance committee, we did talk about just some analysis that we did presented about the shift from inpatient to outpatient. I, I wasn't going to talk about that this evening unless there's questions.
Bob, did you have a question?
I do. So our days cash on hand is pretty high.
Yes.
That's going to dip quite a bit once the construction project.
Not yet, so far.
We're, we're projecting that.
Looking into the future, at some point the bills are going to come and it's going to eat at the top of that.
Well, I had, I already had three, almost three, $3 million in bills that I've been paying from operations so far.
He's very proud of that, okay.
You're in tight fits, thank you.
So you promise a year from now we'll still have the same cash?
In a year from now, we will not get 210,000 cash on hand. Oh, I would, I will promise you that.
Are there any other questions for Scott before we move out of the resolution? Thanks, Scott. He's built, it's what I care, I really appreciate. Appreciate the thorough walk.
There is a, a resolution for some surplus property. Page 58, 59. The actual property being surplus and these are ass, these are pieces of equipment that are fully depreciated and at end of life and actually. Not functional. John, there were two questions that you had from the finance committee about the item one, the DMC, DiCom Publishing System. That is a, a, basically a CD burner for diagnostic imaging. That you can burn any of the MRIs, CTs, any of the scans that we have for a patient onto a CD and they can take it to a, their doctor or their provider anywhere else. And so that, that's what that was, the one.
And so that's going to go away?
It's gone away.
And is it replaced or something else? We do it all digitally?
We've replaced, we've replaced it.
Okay.
We, it has been replaced.
But most of our primary referrals were digital with now, right? We.
Yeah, we can do a lot through the VPN or through Amber, the software that we can use. But sometimes we do still have to do a CD burner.
So we can do it if needed, but we're moving towards the new way of transferring them.
Yep. And lines three, the ultrasound machine was a, a GE ultrasound machine that was, it was obsolete. It was, the probe that you use to do the ultrasound was not with the machine in some. And so it was, in addition to the machine being completely obsolete without the probe, it's not even functional at all. So it had to be scrapped, that we couldn't sell it for scrap.
There's no, no way, no use to try to donate it or something?
It was, it's not, not functional at all. So total value of the pieces of equipment that are at end of life and being surplus or requested to be surplus is 429,000 dollars.
Any questions before we take a motion? Okay, I do have a motion on Resolution 23 that go to regarding surplus personal property.
Almost.
Second. Yeah, motion from Erica, second by Bob. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's 2302, next is 2303, Scott.
That we will talk about later.
Yeah, I, can we, this is that installing executive session?
Okay, so we will have executive session. And during executive session, as always, no action is taken, no votes are taken. But we will, when we return from executive session into public session, likely have a vote on this. Okay. All right, so we'll postpone that. And don't forget, we had Mitchell's report to grant application thing.
A lot of work, no money yet.
Yep.
I usually report it once. Sorry.
Okay, so next, anything, anything else for Scott before we move on? Again, we really appreciate you taking, taking us through all that, Scott, thank you. Next up then, we have the community relations report. Michelle, we're on, Michelle, I see you're, you're all ready to go.
I am here. So my report is on 61. Just a couple of things that I wanted to call to your attention. I believe Mandy Weed has a sign-up sheet for anyone interested in helping with the KBH rodeo barbecue. We are really excited. Yep, thank you, Matt.
You get to volunteer, we were voluntold, so Mandy has already signed us.
Absolutely. Jim and his team, this is always a huge lift. It is great to be able to bring it back. It was something that we had to put on pause and then bring back slowly, thanks to the C-word. But it will be back due to construction. We're actually moving it to the south side of the building. So think about where the mobile MRI is there. We have permission from the city that for that day, we're going, actually Tuesday and Wednesday, we're going to be closing down Spokane Street and having some excess areas, some tents. And so planning is huge on that. Please sign up. You are welcome, obviously, to attend to help, to work. We'll have, the rodeo court will be there. We're also extending the invitation to all of our first responders. That is something that we provide free of charge to our staff and also to first responders in the community. So great event. I think we're looking at somewhere around 650, 700 people that generally come through that. So huge lift to Jim and his team. Also, just wanted to call out, you know, I, I love these meetings because, and my staff hate it the next morning because I'm coming in with all of these communication tools to put out. And one of the things that's going to hopefully help with our staff is we're getting a new Intranet. For years, we've been looking at the Intranet that we are using as a communication tool. It hasn't met all of those needs. Kirsten's done some real in-depth focus work with the department directors and staff. They are currently selecting a vendor right now. And I believe we're going to finalize that decision within the next week. And they've already set up criteria and things that they're looking for and what they want it to do. And so this is a great way that we're able to get communication out to our staff. We use it for policies, procedures, all of that stuff. So that's coming and I did not include that in the report. Also, just wanted to touch upon rapid access. We very intentionally, as you probably heard, it was a very soft rollout. We want to make sure that before we tell the community that we're ready to do something, we want to make sure it's in place and it's working. The 90-day review sounded great in answer to the Saturday question. I, I think just putting some marketing out is going to answer, answer that question. Stacy and her team are watching real closely on heat maps, maps on when it's busy and when it's not. And we'll be gearing our marketing towards that. So you can start to expect to see that real soon. I think there were just a couple of details that we were lining up between Stacy and I. And that should be out, I would guess, within the next five to seven days, honestly. And one of the things that we'll be using on that is our digital signage out front, digital reader board. Hope you guys are seeing that. There are still some trees that get in the way at this time of the year. But we, that's the type of thing that we use. Anytime we have a new provider, provider, for example, we make sure that their photos are up there. We keep them up there for at least 30 days so people coming by know what that is. We use it to announce these meetings so the public can drive by and see that. We talk about events that we're doing. We also use it, you know, like it, it's one of the tools we talk about in emergency preparedness throughout the county. If there's some type of message, and we're talking critical messaging that we need to get out to the public, our partners know that that is available. That's a, that's a tool that we can, we can be using. We use it to talk about our values, you know, to people, that, that's something that you guys know. We, we talk about the. We, we talk about them all the time because we hold each other accountable to those. And so we want to make sure that the public can see that too, so they can hold us accountable to it. So those are just kind of some of the things that we use it for. But always, always welcome to, if you have suggestions, if you'd like to see other things up there, please, please let me know. Any other questions or things you want me to touch upon?
Just a wonder, sorry, Erica, go ahead.
Wanted to comment resignation, Jan Powell?
Yes, yes. Yeah, Jan had been with us for years. We, we did go and we had it in our interviews today, so we're moving through that process. Big shoes to fill, but also a great opportunity to really look at what we're doing and bring fresh eyes in there. And we're, we're excited about the opportunities coming forward.
It's so bittersweet there.
Yeah, very much so.
It sounds like you're finalizing some things with the DEI committee.
Absolutely.
If you wouldn't mind, in August or September, when you have this stuff more finalized, if you wouldn't mind giving just a more detailed rundown on what's happening and maybe sharing the, the materials with us, I'd appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Anything else?
One other thing, I received some questions from community members. Educated people on how to access care and service reports if they have a concern and compliment to share with the organization, with the quality department. The questions I've gotten from community members are if they have an idea, suggestion or concern, it's more general, it's not about necessarily care that they receive, but maybe something like, hey, we, you know, we need more ADA parking. I don't know, it's just something very general. Is there a way to have an online suggestion form for that? And when I was looking at the care and service report page, it very clearly specifies there that because of concerns about privacy, that that is not an online. And I, I know that there could be concerns about people submitting care and service to the general box. But has that been thought of?
You know, so Mandy and I actually had a real good conversation about that this week. And so you're correct, and I'm not going to try and be the HIPAA specialist here. But my understanding, so let's go to care and service report first. If it's something where a patient is wanting to submit personally protected information, PHI, if we have something on our website that allows that submission that therefore transmit, transmits information in an insecure manner, that would put us in jeopardy of violating HIPAA.
Even if it was not the intent that they are submitting it there, okay.
Correct. If somebody chooses to send an email to quality, that is their choice. And one of the things we want to make sure we have on our website, Mandy and I talked, is we just need to add that email. So they are welcome to use, they're welcome to do that. We still have, you know, we'll have the disclaimer that email is not technically a secure transport method for that, but they can, they can do that. With respect to the non-care and service reports, I think what we need to do is just clarify on our website. We have a general email box called questions@kvhealthcare.org. And there, well, people can submit anything and we do get anything on there. And then that comes in to me and based on the nature of what it is, then I would send it out to, you know, either bring it to senior leadership. If it's something engineering wise, you know, send it to Ron. And so that's how we could do that. And I'll be sure to get that up there yet this week. It, it doesn't take long to do that.
And just to add to that, if people often do use the care and service form or email us in quality with suggestions. So we, if it's not a complaint or a grievance, then we don't manage it like that. But just like Michelle said, we would route it to the appropriate person in the department, then follow up on.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
And I did just want to point out, just to make it, because I know we do have some guests here tonight. If you go to our website, under the about us section is where we have our board of commissioners page. You can find both the board packets that you're looking at tonight on there as well as links to our YouTube channel for all the recordings of the meeting. You can go directly to the YouTube channel for any of the recordings of the meetings. And we have links back, I would say at least through two thousand and sixteen, if not before. And so if you have any difficulty finding any of that, Julie can pass along my contact information or just reach out and we would be thrilled to have people watching that and looking out for that.
See that viewership go up.
Always.
Get into double digits.
Yes.
Are there any other questions for Michelle? All right, thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, so education and board reports. Several of us attended the Rural Healthcare Leadership Conference from the American Hospital Association. I'll just say a couple of words. I'm still sifting through my notes, which I'll forward to everybody, so. But I attended some really good sessions on safety, including human factors engineering and stuff, which I'm going to sit down with Mandy at some point and talk about. But I was, I was excited to hear about the Bardco scanning because that's, that's related to all this stuff. But anyway, I, I found it very valuable. Everybody's talking about provider recruitment and new technologies. That seemed to be the two big themes I saw there. But is anybody else who attended, want to say, say anything? Or, I mean, you don't have to, but if you have to say, go ahead.
I'm going to talk about my favorite session, I and DeeDee, because we were in that session together and it was women in healthcare leadership and why it matters. And I found this at a personal and a professional level. And the, the big takeaway, of course, they were promoting elevation of women in healthcare leadership. But when they got down to it, they were promoting mentorship and sponsorship of people and the, I feel like they should trademark this, people who don't look like you. Our, our instinct or our default is to find people to mentor who remind us of ourselves or somebody in our family and kind of adopt them in as a mother or father, other kind of father, anyhow. That, that would, that would be the inclination. But they said, you know, just stop, look around, look at somebody who has some, some natural aptitude or some developed aptitude, recognize that, recognize that they might not have what you had or they might not be someone's first pick because maybe nobody else looks like them or resembles them from whatever mark of life they are. And adopt them into your mentorship and be of course for change for them to elevate themselves. And it was just so, I, I don't know what I really expected out of that session, but it was so moving and it has really stuck with me and I'm really glad to be there with DeeDee.
I totally agree. And it's one of those sessions, it's the last one of the day and, you know, people are tired and some people are like, yeah. But the room was full and.
People were sitting up there.
And yes, taking notes and just lots of great words. And you summarized it wonderfully. And I agree, it was, especially me being new in this role, which I, I'm still going to say every once in a while. But it, it really, it, it resonated with me.
I've told the apple pie analogy so many times since then. And if anybody wants to hear it, please let me know. I'm happy to tell you too, but it's just irrelevant and I love telling that story.
And the other one I liked was we're juggling so many balls and every once in a while, it's okay if a ball drops. Just make sure it's not the glass one.
Yeah.
The rubber ones are about.
Yeah.
Rubber ones come out, the glass ones. Don't be so hard on yourself.
Anyone else have anything to add, who's there?
Well, one of my takeaways was, thematically was with the shortage of healthcare providers now and going to get a lot worse as people retire and are not replaced enough, is that it's imperative as an organization that you have everyone practicing at the top of their license. So if there's work can be done by somebody with less experience and less skill, push that work down to them and make sure that people with those licenses are maximizing their skillset and so forth. I think some of what's happening in adult medicine slash internal medicines, some thoughts about spanning that out. So again, I look forward to tracking with that and seeing how that's one avenue we, we do to maximize the healthcare providers we do have on staff here.
And going along with that was the technology. What can technology be doing to help get the clinicians and the frontline staff with the patient and away from the computer?
There was a primary speaker, this was Sunday, I believe, Amy, Amy Webb. And it was unnerving, it was a great talk. It was unnerving though because she says, twenty years ago, you ask kids what they want to be when they grow up. And what was it, one in five said they wanted to do something in healthcare? And now that didn't even rate. They're not dreaming of going into healthcare. Do you know what they dream about? They dream about being a social media influencer. That's the future. So, okay, we need to start inspiring these, can I just say youth, I used to be youth. We need to start inspiring these youth to look at healthcare, look at something. Maybe they can TikTok their healthcare, I don't know.
There's our experienced healthcare. We just did.
Yes, yes, so wrong. So lots more of that and get these kids engaged.
Yeah, I would love to add that, you know, the theme really, last year, I was fortunate to get to go last year as well. And the stars of the show were the traveling agencies and they were even speaking and they were providing all of their high rates and emergency staffing resources. The theme is, as you heard, was really more about your own, your people and connecting and healing from, you know, a lot of the things that healthcare is going through in the future of healthcare and using technology smarter to support your people. So it's really a theme shift in the, in the healthcare industry. And I also just wanted to add that sending leaders to this conference is actually part of our leadership development strategy. And so I really appreciate the board members that were able to attend and invest in learning more about the challenges in healthcare that we're facing, but also supporting our new leaders. We had several new leaders, Katie, our lab director, Jamie, our new nursing clinic director, Bonnie, who was an internal transfer from materials, and Brenda Heligoss, who's in IT. And so it was really, really just a great time to really focus on healthcare strategy as part of supporting our leaders internally as well.
Yeah, good point, Amanda, thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, no business, no new business. So in executive session, we're going to talk about personnel and real estate. This is the, these conversations are allowed in executive session under Washington state law. But as I said earlier, we will not take any votes until we return into executive session. Sorry, yeah, regular session, thank you. Yeah, until we return to public session, the regular session after that. All right, and we need to discuss both personnel and real estate.
I'm going to ask Dr. Martin to stick around and I think we have a separate line for Amanda. Maybe ten minutes on personnel. Property, another ten.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So let's take a quick break until seven thirty and then we'll convene into executive session.
I'm sorry.
And we still have twenty minutes.
Action anticipated.
Come back into public session at seven fifty. Thank you.
Is there action anticipated?
There will be action anticipated. And since I didn't have my gavel tonight, I brought my own.
Yeah, I think that was about to. Better wheel back. Yeah, get it up so that's a light background. Perfectly.